Good evening and welcome to this working session of Lakeville Board of Education. For introduction purposes, we'll go around and say our name and our role, and we'll just go around the tables. I'm Kim Baker, Chair.
Bill Humgair, the Director of Business here at Lakeville School.
David Anderson.
Stephanie Cass, Executive Director of Communications.
Carly Anderson, Director.
Brenda Albrecht, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Trudy Kelleher, Board of Education.
Dave Haberman, Executive Director of Student Services.
Bree Shinley, Board of Education.
Brian Thompson, Board of Education.
Emily McDonald, Assistant Superintendent.
Lydia Lenzo, Director of Equity Services.
Terry Lynn, Board of Education.
Duckman Zyle, Superintendent of Schools.
All right, thank you very much. So before we get started, make sure that because this is an audio recording, that you speak loudly and clearly, so those that are listening online or being recorded can access that information. We'll go ahead and get started with our discussion, and the first item is Achievement and Integration Plan.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Baker, Vice Chair Lynn, Directors, Superintendent Dr. Van Zyle, Executive Team Members, and members of the audience and those who are listening. Tonight, I'm here to share with you the three-year Achievement Integration Plan for 2023-2026. Also, please know I will be back next week to present at the regular school board meeting. I will quickly touch on the history specific of the plan. I will also include the requirements of the plan as well as how we work to align our plan with the Lakeville Area Schools Strategic Plan. Equity Services has been a department in the district for the past fifteen years in our district, when it became eligible for funding through the Minnesota Department of Education via the Achievement Integration Plan. This was one of the restricted sources of funding that our board and community has been hearing about lately. To be clear, the Achievement Integration Funds are restricted by the State of Minnesota and not by Lakeville Area Schools. School districts become eligible for this Achievement and Integration funding when there is a twenty percent difference or more in the population of our protected students in their district as compared to a neighboring district. Protected students are defined by MDE as African Black Americans, Asian Pacific Islander, Chicano Latino Americans, American Indian, Alaskan Native, and multiracial. Fifteen years ago, Burnsville Schools had twenty percent more protected students than Lakeville Area Schools. This made Burnsville what the state classifies as a racially isolated district, and Lakeville Area Schools as the adjoining district. Adjoining districts can opt in to creating the Achievement Integration Plan to support our students, which is what our district did fifteen years ago. Part of the requirements of the Achievement Integration funding is that the racially isolated and the adjoining districts work together towards their plan goals. Racially isolated districts work in the adjoining Achievement Integration Districts to develop integration goals and activities for their students to participate in together. Recently, in the past month, MDE notified our district based upon the 2022-23 Fall Enrollment Data that Lakeville is now considered a racially isolated district, with the adjoining district being Prior Lake Savage. Now that we are a racially isolated district, we are now required to be in the program. The purpose of the Achievement and Integration Plan is to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and to reduce academic disparities based on students' racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. Before I go into the new Achievement Integration 2023-26 Goals, I would also like to let many of the teams, I'd also like to let you know that many of the teams collaborated to create these goals. Included but not limited, our Equity Services, our Equity Steering Committee, our Teaching and Learning Advisory Council, our Gifted Coordinators, the MTSS Team, and our Multi-District Collaboration Council, which is an advisory group of both District 194 and 191 stakeholders. And that includes community members, and now our newest school board member, Carly Anderson. And that, the Multi-District Collaboration Council, is a requirement by MDE for us to fulfill. Our four focuses for the Achievement Integration Plan. Goal one is focusing on the graduation gap. Goal two focuses on closing our reading achievement gap by using our universal screeners. Goal three is increased percentage of racial and economically diverse students enrolled in advanced academic programs. And our final goal, goal four, is to focus on building all staff capacity around cultural responsiveness. As I mentioned earlier, the Achievement Integration Budget is additional, restricted funding for our district. We have restrictions within the funding as well. The majority, which is eighty percent or more, of the Achievement Integration Funds must be used for direct student services. Direct student services are just as they sound. Eighty percent has to have a direct connection to our students. The remaining twenty percent needs to be split between our professional development and our administrative costs, with the administrative cost not to exceed that ten percent. The budget covers staffing costs, program materials, our school's success liaisons, programming that uplifts our student voices across the district, student interventions and supports in classroom and out-of-classroom resources, working with individual teams and sites, and district-wide professional development. So for the FY24 Budget, we will approximately receive direct student services a little bit over one point four million. Professional development, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Administrative, a hundred and forty-three thousand, which a total of revenue approximately one million, seven thousand, seven, seventy-nine. And that concludes my Achievement and Integration Plan. With that being said, I'd like to continue and read, as I know some of you have received questions around Avid. And so I would like to update you on why we are making the decision to move away from Avid program at Lakeville Area Schools secondary level, seventh through twelfth grade, and to restructure the program to meet the needs of our students. I've been the Avid District Director for the past five years and know the advantages and limitations of the program well. We did not make the decision lightly. I believe we could still offer amazing opportunities for our Lakeville Area students without the official Avid program label. At Lakeville Area Schools, our mission is to provide educational opportunities that ensure every student academically, socially, civic, and personal readiness in partnership with families in the community. In line with this mission, the district's new strategic roadmap has enabled a review of programs and resources to align with district priorities. So it makes it a great time to make changes to the Achievement Integration Plan. Over the past fifteen years, Avid, which stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination, has been part of our district system, with over two hundred staff members trained in the strategies. These strategies will not go away. Trained teachers will still be able to use them and share them with their colleagues. Avid program are offered to our students in Grade Seven, Twelve currently, and we currently have two hundred and eighty-three students enrolled in Avid, of which a hundred and seventy-six students are students of color. Less than one percent are special education students and NOEL students. So what does that mean? Thirty percent of our Achievement and Integration funding is going towards five percent of students in Grade Seven through Twelfth Grade. So that isn't even counting our PK sixth graders, which means one-third of our funding is really only supporting less than two and a half percent of our district population. It is important to note that Avid Program Review found that Avid appears to have a small positive effect on learning measured by our MCA proficiency for students who receive special education service, educational benefits, which are FRLP, and are students of color. So here are the reasons why we are restructuring. Avid is an elective course that does not allow students to take as many interest electives, so they end up dropping Avid to pursue other electives. Some of our class sizes do not even meet our fifteen-student minimum expectations. We need to reach more of our students of color and not just our five percent. And we've never full, we've never been full implemented, meaning our site team meetings have been inconsistent throughout district-wide, increasing our average strategies throughout the schools, buildings. Our CCIs are Coaching Certification Instrument that needs to be done every year with solid evidence and examples, and then sites have been late with requirements. High turnover rate for staff and students. With staff usually get shuffled or choose not to teach it again. Need a lot of training. It's about a thousand dollars per person to be trained. Tutors are hard to come by and hard to hire and retain. We currently have seven tutors, and to be academically effective, we need about twelve to fifteen tutors. And we struggle every year. Longevity, typically our new staff who are not tenured are selected. So likely there's a higher turnover and get moved or transferred or bumped, so always hiring and training new staff. So out of those, out of our current staff right now, zero, zero of our teachers have taught Avid for over ten years. Two of them, five years. Ten of them, two years. And then three, first year. I'm also aware that we would be having to, I'm also aware that this would have been the last year for three of our current teachers, and next year we'd most likely be losing another one. I know some of the questions have been brought up. Can we keep middle school Avid? Or can we keep junior or senior students currently that are juniors and seniors? The problem with that is it's still a cost. So it doesn't matter if we have four classes or one class. It's still the same price, and also the program guidelines and reporting such as CCI, site team meetings are still a requirement. What we like to do instead, I'm planning to regroup some of our Avid team with our directors such as Elida Kane, our Teaching and Learning Secondary Level, and Megan Blazek, and others to build our own program that supports all of our learners. So we like to incorporate WICER, which stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading Strategies throughout the district. It is a viable option we plan to explore going forward. Manage internally and focus on our own students and not meeting the requirements of the Avid program. Additionally, I'd still like to support by having some advisors for that college and career planning and support when it comes to academics. Like to increase our tutor time, including our transportation and materials. As some of you have heard, transportation is a barrier, and that is something that we could definitely provide. Strategies embedded with our professional development on-demand opportunities. Increase maybe some intervention support. Wider net of our students served. Relational capacity building around SCL should happen in every classroom in our district. And critical thinking skills. WICER, as I mentioned earlier, can be part of every program and with standards review for ELA and our history coming up. It's a great time to incorporate some of this planning. I already had an Avid teacher reach out, also with some ideas. I appreciate the emails that I have received around just giving back some ideas on what we could do instead. And this person mentioned that they'd be willing to hold a once-a-week-after-school session, maybe call it a senior seminar, where they talk about whatever the next steps are in the college process and give students time and space to work on that. So this person already gave me a whole list, you know, with an overview on college process timeline, recommendation letters, resume updates, choosing colleges to apply, explaining what FAFSA is, having FAFSA night for our parents. Some of us have been part of those and know what a challenge it is to fill that out, and so that is something that, you know, we still can continue to provide. In conclusion, we have not participated in the Avid program with fidelity. So our decision to move away from Avid program is based on our review of its effectiveness, inclusivity, and fiscally responsible. We need to be inclusive of all of our students of color and FRLP. We remain committed to provide high-quality education to all of our students and will continue to explore and implement strategies that align with our mission. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
The current juniors and seniors, how whether it needs to be met at the program or not exists.
Yep, so as I mentioned, somebody's willing to meet with them after school and go over that. Transportation would be provided. I would also, we would also provide supplies and the teachers' time.
I've always had a concern about a number of kids that I thought should be in Avid that weren't able to be in Avid for a number of reasons. Dave has personal experience with that himself. What do you project next year, how many kids would be affected by the change that would be able to be a quote "Avid kid," it's not Avid anymore, but to meet their needs?
I think a lot more than two hundred and sixty-three students we could definitely reach, and that is something, like I said, we are, we're gonna, that's, the next step is to plan. I don't have an idea right now, but there's definitely some ideas, and I know we have some phenomenal staff that have their own ideas. And so that is definitely something that I would look into. And you're right, I'd like to also mention that Avid does have a criteria, right?
Yes, very, very strict.
Very strict. And students can also be removed from Avid if they're not fulfilling the Avid criteria, right? Students can also be turned away. And so we want an opportunity where students can come in and ask about FAFSA or about colleges, or, you know, maybe even have like, I'm just throwing out thoughts right now too, but even having like a quarterly or semester trip to some local colleges around that we could provide for more than just our Avid students.
And I think when we brought Avid in, it was the right place and time for that, and it helped us get programs off the ground for the needs that we had met. And then those strategies that we were learning in Avid, we also shared district-wide. So other students benefited from what we learned from Avid. I think, and I talked to Emily about this a few years back, there was a big shift when we started shifting away from college readiness and just career readiness and stuff. It seemed like Avid was still so focused on the college readiness, and we had an opportunity to really do career readiness with some of these students. And that shift didn't come fast enough, and I think we started going down that path. And I don't know, maybe that's why we lost some of the students to the MinCaps program and some of the other things that we had going that were more career-ready instead of wanting to be college-ready. So, you know, it's, it's time to evolve, and I'm not sure the Avid criteria or program was evolving like the, the needs of our students were.
So if I remember right, when my son was rejected, it was because he had two college parents, right? So we're not gonna require that anymore? And I'm so old, I was on the first Governor's Council of Integration. Emily and I started the first Equity Committee, right? So it used to be like twenty-nine percent, or twenty-seven percent, five percent difference between Burnsville and us?
Twenty percent.
Yeah, well, it used to be like two thousand and five, I think it was like twenty-two percent.
Twenty-two percent gap.
Yeah, it was higher, but, so what does, what does the racial, racially isolated mean now? Is that worse? I thought we were getting better.
It's not worse. It means we're getting more diverse. So racially isolated, when we're twenty percent, so when there is a twenty percent gap difference
More.
or more, yes. Then we become racially, so, so Lakeville is now the adjoining district and racially isolated district. So meaning we're the adjoining district with Burnsville because Burnsville was our neighbors back a long time ago, right? And continue to work with us. And then now we become our own racially isolated district. And so we were required to either work with two different districts, and then we ended up choosing Prior Lake, being that it was a nearby district.
Because their percentages are a lot lower than ours.
Correct. Yep.
Let me just think a little bit, and then I'll have another question.
Yes.
So I love the idea of being more inclusive and getting to reach more of our students. I guess I'm wondering, what are your thoughts about kind of how long this planning period might take and how that would impact our staff who are involved in Avid? Are those, I know you said kind of pulling some of them in to kind of plan and help with that, but how does this, what is the kind of estimated rollout of such?
Yeah, so our first year, I'd like to take some time, being our first year doing a really set, sit-down planning. I have, as I mentioned to Brian last week, I think it was, that we have set aside some funding for substitutes. That's, as we all know, that's a big one. Set aside some substitute funding, and then also some stipends for our teachers if it's after school, after hours. And so I'd like it to take, and I guess, you know, my ideal would be a year, but if it becomes sooner or later, then that's, that's where we're at.
But those teachers are gonna be participating in this planning process?
If they want to.
If they want to, correct. They're being invited to participate.
So they have the option to opt into this and continue being involved? And then the funding piece, even though you don't have an active program, you're in a planning phase, so it's all?
And it's all under the Achievement Integration.
If I'm an Avid student?
Terry, I was gonna.
You're supposed to, you're supposed to talk. This is casual conversation. If you don't talk, you're missing.
I'm so trained.
No, it's conversation.
Go ahead, Terry.
No, go ahead. I feel really guilty. Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, is there a cost to being, is there like an Avid program where it's a cost to being in the program? Is that one of the concerns?
Yes, yeah.
And what is that cost?
About five thousand dollars per building. It's about, it's about thirty thousand for us.
And then my second question, and I'll let Terry talk, is are we gonna lose any of the funding we get right now because of that? We won't do that?
No, they will still save.
Thank you.
No, I think some of that funding was actually used to pay for that, but we're trying to reuse it different ways with the restructuring.
Correct.
Yeah.
If I'm an Avid student this year and there's no Avid next year, what would that look like to me?
So it, it all depends on the building and who's able to support us. But I do also have a team here at the, at, at the district, our liaisons, that be willing to help, step up and help out with scholarships, because that's, that's, that's one that I hear a lot, right? Is scholarships and then filling out the, as I mentioned earlier, filling out FAFSA. They would get that support also. So we wouldn't be losing any of that.
Even with the transition?
Do you fundraise for scholarships through any of your groups?
Yes, we used to, yep. Just for Avid.
Right, but now we can open it up.
Oh, that's a great question. I didn't even think about that one, yes.
Every once in a while, I get a good.
Thank you.
Shoot, now he's done for the night.
That's it. That's your one.
Thank you.
That's it. That's it.
Any other questions?
Well, I've got a lot, so I've been asked to be patient and listen, and so.
You were, you were really listening.
I was, and I tried my best, and I apologize. I may have to ask a few questions to have you restate a few things that you read, just because there was a lot to listen to.
Yes.
So, so, so bear with me as I try to understand. There's really two topics we're talking about here, so I'm trying to differentiate. You've got the Achievement and Integration Plan.
Yes.
And then folks have been. And then folks have been bouncing around about Avid itself, which is a program-
Which Brian is mandated by the state.
What is mandated by the state?
The achievement integration.
The achievement, okay, that's mandated by the state. And then one of the strategies that we deployed was the Avid program.
Correct.
Okay, got it, okay. And so the recommendation is to evolve from Avid due to the, the limited of students that it impacts. Because as I read the, the MDA recommend, the MDA report here, it's, it's supposed to be promoted to all students and it's supposed to increase student academic achievement, like full stop. Like that's what it is. And so in my mind, that's a very broad category of stuff. And so when we're limiting any kind of program to a certain set of a demographics or whatever it may be, in my mind, that doesn't really align with what MDA, MDE states. So you've got limited access to students. You've got an extra, is it $30,000 a year for the building expenditures? But we've had the program for 15 years, which is great. So that we've had individuals within our, within our program, I'm sorry, individuals within our staff learn the Avid strategies. And so they, my hope is that they've already incorporated them throughout their programs, whether they continue to teach Avid or not, just because they've learned those things and, and so forth. Okay, so the strategies ideally shouldn't go away. My, my assumption is that you've got a standard operating procedure somewhere. You've taken all their best practices and you can spin it, the Lakeville strategies, whatever, and, and we could take advantage of that. We, we'd save some money there. And I think back to what Terry, you asked, the elective, the electives. I wasn't aware that it was actually a class that you take.
It's an elective class.
Is it just one class? Okay.
One class per grade.
One class, okay.
Seven through 12.
And then I heard sprinkles of, of like, oh, helping you fill out your FAFSA, helping you apply for scholarships. Like, do we not have a program that does that in general for all students? I mean, why are we, why is there a separate class that does specifically for Avid students and not for all high school students that want to move forward?
I'm not interested.
Is that a question I'm not supposed to say? I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's like, these are our students. Everyone should have, if anyone has a problem filling out scholarships, they should be able to go somewhere.
Can I ask, Kim, I don't know if you have this answer, but at the high school, we have the career counselors and the career center and the deans. So they have access to getting that established.
So the Avid students have access to them?
No, any of our students do.
All of our students should have access to them.
Any of our students have access to that help.
They would have FAFSA speaker come in.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but why we specifically did it and made it a effort to all of our students in Avid is because the focus of that was first-generation college students. And they need the help and the guidance of how to seek out, find, apply for, complete applications, seek scholarships. So Avid was very focused on that because of the career, the college readiness component of it.
But then there is probably, I was just gonna say, there is the presumption that those students who don't qualify for Avid would be able to reach those resources easily through their own, that, that's a huge assumption that is probably wrong. So to Lydia's point, the goal of the new program would be reach more students. So we're making many less assumptions about what people have access to or not.
Would donor deans, isn't that their job? I mean, isn't that what the deans are supposed to do?
They help with that.
They help with that.
So they don't reach out to every student that's assigned to them to say, hey, what are your plans? Where are you going? What's your career track? I'm curious, because I don't, I've got a ninth grader, so I'm just, I don't know.
I assume so.
I'm, I'm probably gonna, maybe I can speak on behalf of the deans and if, if you think I'm out of line here. But they used to do that a lot more proactively and aggressively until we had some of the reductions. And they have a lot more students to be responsible for now.
Okay, that makes sense.
So in the last round of budget cuts or two rounds of budget cuts, their jobs, they do a lot. But a lot of the proactiveness that they were doing before is limited because of the number of students they have to support.
And I will add, like, one thing that was, that Avid did do, and this is something that we could definitely continue doing if we had Avid or if we don't have Avid, is not only did we have at the high schools informational night about FAFSA, but Avid went a step further and helped families fill out that FAFSA.
Okay.
And, but that's, like I said, one thing that we could add also.
Yeah.
Lydia, placing Avid, are you gonna do some type of class still or no?
Not, not next year.
Okay.
No, but I'd like to do more of the, still having the scholarships, fill out scholarships, resumes, and that stuff, I think we could do not having a class.
Okay.
But how's that academic achievement? I mean, if we're teaching someone how to fill out a FAFSA form, a career planning, is that academic achievement? Because I just don't see it in that definition. I could be mistaken, but.
Part of it is probably, I think, one of the goals you set, well, the achievement and integration plan is to close the graduation gap and those kinds of things. So part of it, I would imagine, with Avid, is helping to create that path and motivate students, what does your path look like and how to kind of get on track with that to help close some of these gaps that we're talking about. So it's maybe not gonna come out, it doesn't sound like it's come out much in MCA scores.
It has not.
But there's, if you, it depends how you define achievement.
Right.
Does achievement mean graduating or your MCA scores or?
So let me ask you that, what, because I'm reading this and I apologize. I'm just trying to understand because the, the sentence is super. Let me rephrase it. The, the answer that I'm seeing here is what is the program? And it said it is to increase racial and economic integration of students and to increase student academic achievement. And it, by reducing academic disparities between students diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. And then the programs can be targeted to, to certain demographics, but should be encouraged and promoted to all students. And so when you've got such a broad, you guys are, sounds like policies yesterday. Keep it broad. All right, so how, how are you defining, what does it mean by increase racial and economic educa- let me rephrase this before we move on, because I want to move on from Avid. I don't have any questions on Avid.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good.
So we're moving into just the-
I want, I like to move to this because I, because I think for me, to better understand this would help me better understand the reason and the purpose and the value of Avid.
What are you pointing at when you say this?
Oh, I'm sorry, when I say this, the, what is the achievement and integration program? That's what I'd like to learn more of. And if, and so I did some research and I did some reading, but, but I'd like to just talk through it. But, but if this is not the appropriate forum and I have to do this offline, I can do that too.
Can I just ask one question about Avid first?
Yeah, go ahead.
So before we switch. So now that you're trying to move away from Avid and the criteria that was used to identify a student population that would access that program, do you have a thought in mind on what student population, like your criteria that you're going to use to identify a student, like your new plan?
Yeah, I don't at this time.
Okay.
But once again, I do know that we can reach a lot more than 176 students of color from seventh through 12th grade.
So is your plan gonna be a broader plan than, than one class?
And specific.
So you're just asking for some time to make that, develop that plan? Not to put you in the spot, but.
Yeah.
So would it incorporate like ELL students?
So it's gonna be more than just filling out scholarships and stuff? It's gonna be like a strategies class there for special ed?
And, yeah, and I don't know.
That's across a bunch of classes and curriculum and?
And I don't, I can't answer that right now.
No, I'm, I'm just-
I would love more opportunity for special ed students, EL students, our students of color, right? Students that.
I think what she's asking is just what you said, is to have time to work with experts in our district and be able to say, so what's gonna best meet the needs of our students? Instead of having it pigeonholed into a very specific group to broaden it and utilize those dollars to make more impact across the district as a whole.
Yes.
So I think that, not that, not that you said it exactly like that, but I think that's what the gist of it is, is to broaden the reach.
Is there more, I know the $30,000 cost, but is there more cost that? I mean, I'm just imagining we're trying to reach many more students. Is that going to up the cost? Should we expect more than $30,000?
No, because the $30,000, it was, it was, it was probably about an estimate of $500,000 per year with Avid. And that's with all the training, with field trips.
So the $30,000 is just like-
It's just the name, that's it, correct.
So you'd a lot more money than $3,000 to reach.
And you've got dedicated teachers that teach the Avid course itself? Okay. And how many teachers did you have?
Point two, so 15 teachers total. So point two FTEs per grade.
Point two FTEs per grade. And you've got 15 staff members that work point two, which is the equivalent of three FTEs. And Bill, if you use your $80,000 average, that's a $240,000 expense for, for continuing the Avid program. Is that my understanding as I?
But that's not correct, it's school budget money.
No, it's all the grant.
But is that the, right, okay.
It's all restricted funds.
Okay, then what are we doing with those folks? With, with, with the three FTEs and the 15 that are now due?
So I've added, so it has restructured. Right now, they are all going back to the classroom, to whatever classes they were hired.
Okay.
Right? So example, Spanish class would be going back to full-time Spanish.
So what this?
Three that were not, we had three that were not coming back.
Okay, we're not.
Based on the budget cuts?
Two based on the budget cuts and one who wasn't interested in teaching again.
All right, but so bear with me as I think this, so those 15 students, those 15 staff, they are now have to pick up a point two elsewhere.
Correct.
So then, so we would need to at least approve on the Avid sooner than later because, and that has a triple, trickle effect. Based on what I'm learning from the budget conversation, that those folks then, because they could bump another teacher out due to tenure, whatever the rules are, right?
Well, and I think this integration budget that we're getting presented to next week is being presented because it has to be voted on in a timely manner in coordination to the timeline that MDE requires.
Correct, which, yes, we're a little late on that.
I thought it was March 15.
It was, March 15.
March 15.
It was.
Okay.
We do.
Okay, so thank you for allowing me to talk through at least the Avid piece to learn, at least from the, from a financial side or the numbers side. So again, it's a, it's an elected course, 15 staff members, they, they work point two of it, which is the equivalent of three FTEs, $240,000 savings. Those folks would then end up going back into the teaching space.
Correct.
And, and then allows us, as you consider the next three-year plan, to how best do we utilize an extra $240,000 where it makes sense? And then from an enrollment perspective-
And if we're late on that, does that impact the funding?
Oh, yeah.
No, I did already reach out to MDE a few times.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. You had 283 people in Avid. And then roughly half of them were, or a little, over majority of them, or over 50% are students of color. But when we look at the, when we look at the 11,800 students, 20% now, knowing that we are now a racially isolated district, that's 2,360 students from kindergarten all the way through high school. And the Avid program currently focuses on 176 students.
Early childhood?
Oh, pre-K, sorry, yes.
Pre-K, okay.
Sorry, yep.
So, so we've got 176 students of color, well, let me rephrase that. 176 that are in the protected student class, where we have, according to the enrollment numbers, we have 2,360. So you're not missing out, but the opportunity of those individuals engaging and participating into this Avid elective program, for whatever reason, are, are choosing not to opt into that. So is there any, are there other strategies that we can encourage a broader, you know, participation of, of, of our, of our, of that population?
Exactly, Mr. Thompson, and that's what I'm, that's what we're looking at.
Okay.
Exactly.
Well, and some of it's not an opt-in, some of it's based on the criteria.
Criteria, they wanted to go in, but maybe they can't make it for whatever reason, okay.
Exactly.
We loosen some of those things that allows us to put more people.
We have our own criteria that are established based on how many people you want to serve.
And it allows us to flex and change up differently, more quickly, to meet our student needs, whatever that population might look like from one year to the next, allows us to flex and change more.
Exactly. Just more opportunity for more of our students.
Yep.
I have a question. There's a $240,000 savings, but 80% of your budget has to go to staff, so it's not worth the $240,000.
So you will receive that this, next week, you'll see the budget. What I have, what we have put in there is some more liaisons, school success liaisons, because that is something that I have heard.
Maybe more deans? Maybe more deans?
Not more deans. No. However, we could look at something different as far as that college and career readiness looks like.
That's, I made a note about that, wondering if the old career and college readiness, career development role that we had here, if that could somehow fit into, into this and into our career centers and stuff? If we could do something more there. But I think you also said that you were gonna be using it for some stipends and some other things that we're gonna, to be able to continue to support the Avid students this year as we're making this transition. Some of those dollars are gonna be savings here but used there.
That for schools and?
Correct, yep. And I know that Director Alida Kane is also working on some of that, right? With Megan Blazett. And so that is something definitely that we are going to try to restructure for next year.
Needs to come up with a fancy name.
Well, oh, and then, yep, Mr. Thompson brought up a really good point last week, is what if the students came up with that name?
There you go.
There you go. Came up with a new elementary school name, so why not?
Yeah, that would be fun.
Okay.
All right.
So thank you for the, well, thank you for the Avid overview, but I, I'd like to go back to this achievement and integration because we kind of like flew past that and focused a little bit on the Avid program. So I, I'd like to spend more time, again, so thank you for the clarification. I'll learn more about the Avid program as we go into next week. You know, just super high level, looking at the numbers. The intent is to, to increase the scope of impact. And when you've got a very small percentage out of the 2,300, that, it shows that we're not, it's not impacting very many. All right, so this achievement and integration plan, and it's, it's funded by the state. So does all the money come, come from the state or does it come from other sources?
All of it.
One-third of it comes from levy.
Yeah, from all.
So this, so from the school, I mean, from our community? Okay, so, so 66, so two-thirds comes from the state and then one-third comes from our community from property taxes. Okay, so.
Can I just stop for a second? So I also think there's a maximum of what we can do and I don't think we utilize all the funding available. We hadn't in the past, do we today?
Yeah, we, we do use the whole amount.
Oh, we do use the whole amount now?
Sometimes, yeah, we spend more, spend more, because otherwise we lose.
Yeah, right, right, that's what I was wondering, because at one point, we never used all of the funding, but now we've gotten to the point where we're using it all, okay.
So, so that, so what is that maximum funding amount? Is it $1.7 million?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and one-third of it comes from our community and the rest comes from our state. And they are restricted dollars, meaning that they can only be used for achievement and integration-related programs?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so let me, thank you for that. Okay, so, so let's go back to like, what the heck is this plan? Because I read increase racial and economic integration of students and then increase student academic achievement. So how are, how is MDE and/or you, like, what is this, like, what does this mean? I mean, tangible, I mean tangible, I mean tangible, tangible metrics that show that, are we, like, increasing? So I'll stop there because, because I don't know.
So that's where those four goals come in place. So goal one, and I will be even more specific, how's that? Goal one is to decrease our graduation rate disparities for our racial and economically diverse students. So we know that there is a gap between our students of color and our white students when it comes to graduation rate. And so that is one of the goals that we hope to close.
Can I pause here?
Is that true in Lakeville or is that just for the state? Because I know it's quite largely for the state.
It's worse, yes. Yes, but yes, true in Lakeville.
But better than the state effort.
Correct.
And that's also FRLP, right?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Let me pause you there, because I'm reading the first sentence where it says increased ratio and economic integration of students. Does that mean we want to improve gradu- graduation rates? Or, because I, as I read this, are we, are we supposed to have a classroom that has twenty percent of protected class? Or, I'm not understanding the sentence or this line.
No, we're not, we don't need, we don't have, supposed to have a class, so it is just district-wide. So we know there's a, we know there's an achievement gap, let's just statewide. Probably one of the worst, right?
How, how are we defining achievement gap?
Students of color. And our FRLP students, which are free reduced lunch.
Okay. So when they say increase student achievement, it's only for, we're looking at the data of that protected class, and that's it?
Yes.
So by reducing academic disparities based on a student's diverse racial, ethnic, and economics background, okay.
I have a suggestion. You have a big, thick form you have to fill out for the state, where you, where they list their objectives and how they're going to achieve it.
And you'll see that. Yep, you'll see that this week, Friday.
So why are your questions going to be answered with that, I would think?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And we can get a pre-read on that, so that.
You'll receive that on Friday.
Before we get the packet.
Yes, you'll get the, the packet and the, the budget and the plan with the strategies.
And Lydia, do you?
Because if I was a new board member, I'd be very confused right now.
I am, because I, you know, as I read this sentence, you know, increased ratio and economic integration of students, I would view that as, do we, how do we integrate them into our students, into our classrooms, or whatever may be? And then when it says to increase student academic achievement, you've got such a broad, wide range of things. So how do we know we're actually hitting, how do we know we're improving? How do we know we're doing, you know, what metrics are we using to show?
That's in the plan.
And that's in the plan.
That's all in the plan.
Those are the KIPs, which is our key indicators.
I totally see your comment from Brian, but the plan is, it's quite long.
So I gotta wait until Friday, so what I'm hearing is I have to wait until Friday to get the plan, read it over the weekend, and then talk about it on Tuesday, so then we can vote. Is that what I'm hearing? So I've got four days to read this.
Well, again, it goes back to what's governance and what's administration. Her department is the administration of that. Your goal is the governance, that's some of those higher questions that you were kind of already asking.
Yeah.
But how it gets carried out is what she and her team and the staff are then charged to do.
And I think, oh, I was, I was gonna say, I think the purpose of tonight was to let us understand a little bit more about the integration dollars, the funds, and how it came about. So when you're reading it and stuff, you understand the intent and the purpose, and where the funding is coming from and that kind of stuff. The details will definitely be laid out in the goals and the KPIs.
Every penny.
There's, I was gonna say, if you want a head start, I know there's been previous very thorough, um, presentation, because you present.
There's one every year.
Yeah, so.
There's one every year, so there'd be a.
If you have a date, you could give Brian to go back and look at the previous.
And is one point seven million the most that we can get, or can we get more?
That's the most.
That's the max.
Yep, that's the max.
And what happens if we don't do this plan?
Then you lose the money.
Well, we don't, not only we don't have, but we're also.
We're also obligated to do that because we're racially isolated.
The designation that we just received.
Yeah.
We had, we were picked with Burnsville, she gave you the one designation, now we as our elementary district got another designation, so we got a double.
That's what I was gonna say, what does that mean for going forward with having us adjoining and racially isolated?
We will continue, and it doesn't mean more money, because I did ask.
I mean, we have to meet with both?
Yes, I do, yes, we do.
Just more work for us.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, I think that was what the intent of tonight was, is just to understand what this funding and this, this was and, and stuff. So when you get it, you've got that frame of mind when you're reading it. But it was back in March fifteenth, a year ago, is when we approved the last one, right around there, so you can go onto the board book and, or, or onto the website, and you'll find that, and that's out there.
Yeah, it's a plan on the website?
Yes, it is.
It's all, it's all in the board.
I'll go there and take a look, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, as I read this again, ten percent of the one point seven million, it will pay for administrative costs, we're going to spend a hundred and seventy thousand dollars on staff, and then twenty, uh, uh, to, to, to implement, or not even to implement, to, to, to lead this effort. And then you've got twenty percent for professional development.
No more than twenty percent.
No more than twenty, and then eighty percent will be all used for whatever the thing that we're doing to implement. So why would they?
I think, just to clarify, you said a hundred and seventy thousand just for staff?
I'm sorry, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the administration, uh, resources.
Because the staff, the staff implementation can be, is part of that.
Direct student services.
Is a direct service.
Okay.
So that's part of the eighty percent, it can be what the staff is doing, that they, those dollars you need to pay staff for those direct services.
Got it, but the ten percent of the administration cost is for who then?
Myself, or equity specialists. I have to look, but yes.
I think you and.
Cajun.
Cajun are in there.
Yeah, okay.
And then if you're using ten percent for professional development, but there's so much turnover, the training goes under that, right? So imagine if you have to do less training, you can do more professional development, that's not specifically training. It could be more student.
Yep.
So.
Are we good?
So I got two more questions, and then I'm good, so, so the second one.
That's what he says, you hear that, too hard.
So.
We'll see.
Well, I want to know.
He's been nice, he's been pretty, he's been pretty.
I've been very good, I've been very good. And so, if we get one point seven million dollars, I think, is the state really going to give us one point seven million dollars when we don't have, when we're in the process of thinking about creating a plan? I mean, is that, that we just submit a proposal saying we're going to create a plan?
Some of this would be implementation of what, what he was talking about, some of these after-school things or other kinds of FTE planned into.
So, just to be clear, Avid was just a little part of the yearly plan. So, the yearly plan has been out there for fifteen years, you can go look at the one from last year, Avid's just a small part of it. So she's continuing due to the plan that we've always done, the goals, the KPIs, and all that kind of stuff. The one component that she's sharing with us, it's changing due to the restructuring, is just the one Avid component.
This and that piece, okay.
Yes.
So there are other things that we're doing this year?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
In the plan.
I think I'd like, and that would be in the plan that I can read over the weekend.
And I think the Avid piece was just brought to our attention, because we're starting to get emails on it, so we can understand what it is and why it's being restructured.
Exactly.
And so I briefly heard, March fifteenth was the deadline?
It was.
And we missed it?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so what is that, like?
I, I just, I, I already spoke to MDE about that.
Terry's going to jail.
MDE is in jail.
Representing him for free.
It wouldn't be the first time, right, Terry?
Somebody makes a dollar, so.
Yes.
I'd like to make sure we got some sort of like documentation saying that we're good, like, we passed the deadline.
I haven't.
Okay, and when is, when's the new deadline?
Um, ASAP.
As soon as you approve it. There's no pressure. They've given us a bump.
Yes, they knew we were going through the general funds, and so we really wanted to keep, um, the achievement integration away from general funds due to that restricted funds, I think people tend to sometimes think they're all in together.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
So I have talked to MDE, and they're okay with us waiting until, but the ASAP would be great.
I was going through the, the last year's plan and the goals, did we meet the targets? Do you know?
We did not.
Okay.
And that is due to COVID, right? And then the following, so the first year that we created that plan, we went.
Into COVID.
Yes.
This is more than a one-year plan.
And then distance learning, because it's a three-year plan.
Okay, do we lose money if we don't hit, hit, hit our targets?
Did not lose money for that. We just have to work harder the following year.
They just call up the ULA's.
Do we make more money? Do we get, I mean, now, or say make more, do we get extra income, extra bonus, extra revenue if we hit our targets?
No.
So what's the intent of having targets?
Students that are.
The intent is to do what's the right thing for the kids and try to.
I, I did that, but, but if we, alright, I can, I can review the data later.
Yep.
I mean, it does.
Well, it seems like when you go through it, it's, there's different things, there's different gaps that we're trying to close. So there's, I think there's, there are things you try, and it's always based on certain outcomes, a better outcome for the students, that's kind of the prize. But you try, I would assume you try different things that you think are going to work to help close that, and part of it is also seeing how long it takes to implement those things, and when the effect occurs, and what isn't, and what is and isn't working, and continuing to value it back.
And, and we'll see parts of the, like, things that maybe didn't work as well that we're going to implement next week. When would you present it, and where the funds go, you're gonna, that, that'll all be in there?
Yes, yes, you will see line per line, um, where the money is going.
Okay.
Exactly, and we have it in the three categories, the direct student services, professional development, and administrative side of it. And so it's very detailed.
Okay. Good.
Alright, so I think.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
At least two questions. Alright, so moving on, we have the ULA and grievance committee, Brenda?
Yes, um, so the, we have potentially one person that may request a hearing in front of the school board regarding the ULA process. I am not aware of who is on the committee from the school board, so we're looking at establishing that tonight. And then also who is, uh, going to be placed on the grievance committee.
So you're looking.
And you really have two options with the UAL, you can either have a board committee, or you can assign an apartment, and I think I wrote to you, a lot of data places will use their HR department as their, their ULA group.
Yeah.
Because they know certifications and how all those things play out, so those are really the two options that you have, is that accurate?
Yes, yep.
And, and in the past, we've done this two ways, we've got a subcommittee of the board, and we've done the whole board. It really just depends, and I, I think the recommendation for how to do it usually came from HR, and whether they wanted the whole board or a subcommittee. So.
Uh, HR would prefer, uh, either HR or HR and a subcommittee of the, of the school board. And that's only because human resources, Kate and Sarah in particular, they know the contract language so well when it comes to the ULA process. So that, that would be my recommendation.
And whether it's a subcommittee or the, the committee of the whole, it's a closed session situation, correct? Is this a closed session situation?
I think it's a closed session unless they request it to be open.
Correct.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, so whether, whether it's a sub or a whole, it's still a closed session.
Right.
So I think, so I think this is like, has a much broader conversation we need to have, because I, as I look at other school districts, they have personnel committees, where they focus on, you know, the, I'm not really sure what they do, but they've got personnel committees, you know? And, and so I would assume that a category or a topic of this nature would have fallen under, within that respective bucket. Would that be fair statement? I don't know.
That would be fair if we're doing a subcommittee, but for the last several years, we've been operating out of, as a committee of the whole.
Okay.
So, so that's why we don't have them, because we operate as a committee of the whole.
So the whole board went to?
Yeah, each grievance.
Yep, so at all of our, whether it be, whether it be, uh, finance committee, personnel committee, whatever, for the last several years, we've been asked, acting as a committee of the whole.
And I think this goes back to our, yesterday's conversation around the, a finance committee, a, and then what other committees should we be considering? There's seven of us, and is there an opportunity to divide and conquer in, in the different areas, but, okay.
That's kind of off the topic, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's true, but I mean, it's understanding, if you're, if you're a subcommittee, you're representing the board's voice, and you have to understand what the board's voice is and what all the board members are. And if you're not to that point, then we operate as a whole, and that's where we've been for the last several years.
And that might be a good idea to continue, so people know what goes on with the four new board members, to operate as, as a whole on, on the grievances, to experience what's going on.
Can, can you walk me through, uh, what would happen in that experience? So I'm assuming we're here, the individual would come in and share their point of view, and do we vote on something at the end? Or, I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand how, what that grievance process would look like.
The grievance process or the hearing process?
I'm sorry, the hearing process.
Um, to be honest, I don't know what it would look like, because I haven't been through it in this school district yet. Um, and I've never been in a district where we've had to make budget cuts, and I've never been in a school district that has this type of language in their contract.
Does the language in the contract require a board member, board member or board members to be a part of this?
It says a.
No, it doesn't, it said can be a board, or the board can appoint a designated.
Yep, designated committee.
So I guess the question would be, for this board, do you want a committee, or do we want to participate as a whole board? Correct, that's the question.
Or designate.
Right. Or designate.
For the U, the UAL group is one thing, the grievance committee is another.
Two different things we're talking about here.
For the grievance.
For the UL, for, for the ULA, if I understand your recommendation, is you're asking for an HR team to handle that, and that's what your recommendation is to do well, correct?
And then that team would report that.
Yep.
And I don't think you'd better have them involved than you.
Nope.
No.
I'm comfortable.
We're involved in the grievance.
Vale's comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And then so the next part is the grievance one?
Grievance group.
Okay, so then, do we want a whole board, or do we want a board subcommittee for that?
I think what Terry said earlier about at least for this onboarding, with four of us being new, it might be helpful.
Yeah, we may have one a year, it's not very common.
It's not very, it's not.
But it'd be a good learning experience at one time.
Okay.
How, how soon does this need to be done? Does it have to be done within twenty-four hours, or is this something that could be, uh, brought forward at, at the next board meeting?
It, it needs to be done as soon as possible, because we do have a couple of grievances that are on track to come to the school board very soon.
And because it's, just because it's closed session, it still has to have the seventy-two hour post time and all that kind of stuff, so none of those change.
Should it have to be a meeting by Friday, would be the fastest, earliest, is that right? Okay, and, and so if, if it was done on Friday hypothetically, we would need at least four board members to be present?
Who?
Unless we say the whole committee wins.
What's a whole committee?
If you say the whole committee, then, then at least, then you have, then you for sure have to have a quorum, if you say the whole committee. If you say it's a subcommittee, then it's got to be those two or three people.
Is this too late to have something done prior to our next meeting, next Tuesday? If we just do something prior to, is that too late?
No, that, that, that's.
Yeah, so we could just do it Tuesday night before our meeting.
And that, that would be acceptable, or that would be reasonable?
Before stakeholder session.
Instead of having a trendy rush.
You do that, if we did something at four, then we do stakeholder at five, and then the meeting, or no?
Can't do four.
Five sixes.
What are you talking about, if there was a, I don't know what you're asking.
Wait.
All you need to do tonight is, you, you made the decision with the UAL, you just, you just.
Yeah.
Yep.
Then with the committee, you just have to decide the same thing, you're going to want to do committee as a whole, or do you want to do a subcommittee?
Committee as a whole, but we're talking about when, when do we need, need to meet as a committee?
Oh, do you hear the grievance, you mean? We don't have a date yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't have a date, we don't have a date. We, we just wanted. She just wanted to establish a party for the day, so we weren't rushing to say, hey, we got this grievance, now we need to decide. Twenty-four hours.
She's trying to be proactive in that.
So that we're, we're. We have to have four, for sure.
We have to have four.
For sure, for four.
We just have to have four.
Well, we said committee as a whole, but there would have to be four.
There have to be, there's a core. Yes, okay, no, sorry, I thought.
And we can align it during working sessions or after a working session, or whatever may be.
Yeah, we have to mean whatever the timelines are within.
Yeah.
Legal.
We have to explain that to, because there's, there are some dates and times from when you get a grievance to when you have to act on it.
Great, so I think we're decided on that, so we'll keep going, policy process update, and I'm assuming that should be a question?
Yes, yes, so I just wanted to share, um, I know that, um, some of you had asked to see what the MSBA redline versions of the policies look like, so I printed one off to kind of go over with all of you today, so you have an idea of what those look like?
We looked at them yesterday, too.
Oh, oh, okay.
With the two hundred.
Oh, okay, do you, do you want, do you want me to even go through it?
Yeah, I would love to.
Okay.
Yeah, I told them you would kind of explain the process that you use.
Yes.
Right.
So I picked a, a short, easy one, but yet one that had, um, multiple examples that I could show you in this policy. So you'll see that the MSBA policies don't say Board of Education, they say school district. district. So every policy, Board of Education, will be redlined, and, and school board will be in, in there as a replacement, but we know we're staying as Board of Education, so we keep, keep that as it is.
Yep.
So you'll see where I wrote stat on there with an arrow, and it's an underline, that is added language for the policy, and this is verbatim from statute. So this is just an update that changed in statute that needs to be added to the policy. And then at the end, where you see the cross-reference, it, it references other model policies that may have same or similar language as this policy. So basically, that's what it'll look like. New language is underlined in red, old language that needs to come out is a strike through. Typically, new language that is added is going to be statute updates or grammatical changes, like, you can see in item A, procedures is underlined, so they're just adding a word in there, it's not necessarily statute, but it makes the sentence clearer, or it's a grammatical change. So that's typically what is in these M S B A redline policies.
And you're starting with the M S B A policy here and redlining it to hours?
Yep, I'm redlining it to hours. So then, when the policy is finished, it will be up to date with what M S B A recommends.
Yeah.
It's, it's important to keep in mind that our, our policies, they're legal documents. If we, if we make too many changes that are outside of what is recommended, it can really, it can really corner us in sometimes with what we can and can't do. It can increase our risk for liability, so just keep, keep some of that in mind as, as we're going through policies.
And I think you're right, because we had a little discussion about this yesterday around, you know, what is the intent of the policies? Do we make it, I don't want to use the word gray, but do we make it directionally correct with some flexibility? Or do you refine it so that it has some teeth to it, where this is exactly what we do, and we have roles, and it's very clear with the intent of, of the policy itself? So I don't have the answer, but, but again, I think as we go through the 200 series that we started yesterday and just made it to the first one, I don't think we finished the first one, and, and there's 13 of those to go through in the 200 series before we jump into the 300 series, but I think as, as the board continues to review the 200 series and kind of hones in around what is our philosophical approach in creating policies? Do we make it more flexible, or do we make it a bit more refined? I think those are things that we'll have to get through, but, but I do agree with you, the more high level gives you some maneuverability where it makes sense, but, but again, that's my two cents.
Right, because we want to be able to defend ourselves with, within what is in policy, and, you know, this one is pretty short, but we have some that are quite lengthy, and if you, if you add your, you know, Lakeville language, for lack of a better term, to, you know, section two, item A, it may be contrary to statute later in the document, you know, item D, section five. So you have to be really careful about what, what you're putting in, that you're not contrary to something else later in the document.
So, and I'm going to add an example of that, it was many years, not many, but it was years ago, we had one of our policies that got contested, and it went up to the federal courts, and if we, the district was validated based on the fact that our policy was very true to what the legal language was coming out of M S B A and out of those recommendations. And so we're always been very careful not to just change policy in a word here or there, because it makes a difference legally, and, and that's just one example. We've had that happen a few times, where we've been challenged by the state courts and the federal courts, and our policies have always stood up to those.
Oh, good. So one thing to, just to consider with that, as you're talking about it, is, you know, when all these statutes are cited, it almost feels like we have to go read the statute.
Right.
You do.
Really?
I understand.
You do.
So that's, it's not as simple as just being like, oh, this doesn't sound good, I want a different, it's.
That's what I was saying last night, is some of that wording that we were discussing was in statute.
Yeah.
And so if we go changing that, like I said last night, it opens up and exposes us to lawsuits and risk and stuff like that, and, and again, our statutes have stood up in state and federal court.
And some statutes make sense and some don't, I've read many of them.
I have a logistics question. As you're updating policies and changing policies that come before us, a lot of them are, are just changing words and not changing intent.
Like this.
When you, when you, we see those in the consent agenda, or if we're doing major changes that we need to talk about of other policies, can we have the new things underlined so that we know, is it, because in the past?
I think that's.
No, no, but she's done this to show us how it's different than M S B A.
She's, I think she's showing this, that this is how they're going to be presented going forward.
If this, if you want the redline, this is what it will look like.
We would like that.
Yeah, any changes, I want to be able to see them.
That's what this is, it's underlined.
Okay, I thought you just, this is show us.
Yes, this is exactly what it will look like.
Because if it just said changing Board of Education, School Board.
Well, I know, I don't want to hear that, but.
Yeah, and just, like I said, just be aware that anything that is, typically anything that is underlined is going to be update to statute, things that are struck out, stricken. We have one coming up where no child left behind is, is stricken in the document, and it's just replaced with federal law. So it's being more broad.
Right.
So the no child left behind will be taken out, federal law will be put in, in its place.
Thank you.
Hey Terry, are you asking also that these redlines are also, this is what would get posted at in our, our agendas and everything?
That's what I said.
So their community, yeah, okay, so our community can see the red lines.
Right.
Trying to differentiate between the two, okay. And, and we talked about this yesterday as well, and I just want to make sure that we're, you know, that I can share that. M S B A, yes, we, we subscribe to them and look to them as, as they are a for-profit company, to read all the state legis, all the rules that get passed, and then try to convert them into policy that all the districts in Minnesota can reference and, and consider using, and again, so when they create those policies, they're for small districts and very large districts, and so it, I, I want to be mindful that while we are reviewing and acknowledging what, the, the good work that M S B A has done, they've also created a policy that should be applicable to small and large districts, and for a variety of different demographics, for a variety of different reasons and purposes. So, so when we look at them, you know, I'm not saying M S B A isn't the source of truth, but I just want to be mindful that they're creating a, a policy that should be, that could, that could be applicable for everyone in, in all the school districts. And so I'm not saying our district is vastly different from Farmington, or Randolph, or maybe Eden Prairie, I, I don't know, but there may be instances where we may want to have Lakeville specific things for consideration, so.
Well, and I think M S B A, the policies that they develop aren't for small, large, or medium.
They are. I, I listened to the meetings, and, and they said their policies.
Well, no, but it's, it is, because it's based off the state statute, which applies to all school districts, small, medium, and large. But like when we were trying to do, I can't even remember what policy it was, but it wasn't around state statute. It was, it was around, we were having, we had some student desks, and there were memorials and stuff like that, and there isn't anything around state statute that requires anything. So M S B A doesn't have a policy then, because there's no state statute. So we had to reach out to multiple school districts to see what they had about how to handle memorials and, and student grieving and stuff like that, and we developed a policy ourselves based off of other school districts. So M S B A, if I'm not mistaken, their policies are all based off of some sort of statute and law. They're not, and so they apply to small, medium, and large.
Yep.
Period.
But, but we can add things to it if we want to.
If you want to put yourself at exposure to risk and liabilities.
So we can have those discussions then.
But that is where I see the challenges, where maybe we should, so some, some of what I think our job is, is to understand the policy, and then when things like the procedures come under review, do those procedures really align with the policy, and are there gaps or things we don't feel like are being well addressed, or that kind of stuff? So I think it would just be interesting to bring some of the procedural stuff into the fold to see, okay, does this make sense to really have this high-level policy, because here we have a very outlined graph in our district, and we feel comfortable with that versus feeling like we have to, I don't know.
Yeah, it makes sense.
It might just be helpful to like pull both of those pieces of information.
Because you get the whole picture, to understand, it's a policy that we created, it's a procedure that we're actually enforcing, implementing.
In a way that feels personal to our.
Yes. So some of the discussion with that was around, here's our policies, and maybe filling in the gaps where we need to, like with the vacancy, or also having the handbook that provides the more detailed stuff, it's not in policy, but then we know our procedures in our district.
So there would be two things that I think I would recommend, and I don't know if you're to the point and ready to do this again, but that student management handbook that you presented to the last board, and how that ties into those two or three policies that we needed to address. So that would be valid to see. A really good example of a student management handbook that applies to very legal policies that we have in place around bullying, harassment, and that type of thing. And then the other one around our 200 policies, Kim sent it out last night, I believe it was, our Board of Education handbook that we have, that we just started, and how can we take some of the things that you talked about concerning, instead of, instead of changing statute language and policies that are law, how do we put that maybe into our handbook for a better description? And honestly, if you're a community member that wants to learn about what the school board does, I would never recommend them reading policies. I mean, that handbook is really where you would want them to go, and give them something that's a little bit more user-friendly to read. So those would be two really good examples for us to talk about, our 200 policies and our school board handbook, and the student management one in those 500 policies.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that again.
Well, maybe we should have a policy committee.
I think we're doing one as a whole right now, because I think there's a lot of learning that needs to be done as a whole.
Maybe good to have Brenda and Dave there, too.
Well, I would think that they wouldn't be if we're talking about policy, because that's your job. I mean, if we're, if we're going to be implementing policy, it's, or if we're going to be doing policy, it's her job to implement it, so.
The reason they weren't there last night is because the board, it was board-specific policies.
Yeah, and, and honestly, I, I thought we were still to the point of learning and understanding the policies and agreeing as to what they meant to action, so we know what they are before we actually start changing.
Now, we could change as we go. I think we can, I mean, let's agree, we can, we can read and understand, but if it makes sense for us to make changes.
Oh, absolutely.
We can make that.
Right.
Okay.
Any more questions for Brenda? Nope. All right, so let's move on. So I allowed this place in here for the finance committee that met to kind of talk about their process and what they went through, and, you know, do we need to continue the finance committee, I mean, just kind of hear that process and make some decisions around what we want to do with it, so.
Yeah, what happened?
So I was there, and I think I arrived a little bit late, yeah, but then Bree showed up, and we had some folks from, Doug showed up, Bill was there, Carly, Carly was there, and we had Carrie Pop join as well and provide some ideas for, for the, for the broader team. And so the intent of the meeting was to have, and we've got some notes that are coming through, but.
Yes, actually getting them to you.
She took the notes, right?
Yeah, and I can go over some, some of the things that we talked about, because it was, it was, it was great. So, so a couple of things that we just want to acknowledge, there wasn't a resolution that was passed by the board, any documentation that said, hey, this ad hoc budget committee could go, and so we, we acknowledged that there wasn't approved, it wasn't, it wasn't written documented by, by the, by the board itself, but the board voted to, or not voted, the board agreed, and wanted to move forward with it, so we just acknowledged that that was there, and you acknowledged, and I acknowledged, and you, and Carly acknowledged, so then, so we continued on. The intent of the, the ad hoc budget committee was to talk through a variety of different other alternatives and options for consideration to potentially bring back to the school board as a whole for, for, for review, and for, and additional dialogue. During spring break, and, and I think from, and, and previous weeks as well, Carly, Bree, myself, we, we had a chance to read the 96 pages that were submitted of, of ideas that that staff shared earlier in the fall, or, or, I'm not sure exactly.
The teacher survey.
The teachers, the teacher survey, yep. So, A, appreciative of all their thoughts and ideas, and appreciative of the administration consolidating that as they kind of prepared to present the overall proposal as a whole, but it was good to kind of hear all the other ideas that they had. So, so we put together kind of a, a high, a high-level list of things, and, and it was an open forum where we, we talked with Bill and, and Doug and, and Carrie around, are these viable options or not? And I think we went through quite a few of those on that list, and, and realized that they weren't a significant viable options, but some that, that could potentially be further explored, explored, and to come back. And, and so if you'd like, I can, I can go over five to 10 of them to say, here are a couple of options, or.
I mean, go over the ones that are like viable, that as in the like exploration to maybe being future savings in the district?
Yeah, yeah, so, so the substitute teacher one was a very interesting hot, not a hot topic, but an interesting topic.
Yeah.
So, so we spent 1.9 million dollars in substitute teacher expenditures, and, and due to the two permanent substitute teachers from the budget proposal changes, we are projected for next year to be about 1.5 million dollars in substitute expenditures. Three years ago, before COVID even happened, we averaged around $500,000 in teacher, substitute teacher expenditures. Now, rates have gone up, and the utilization of substitutes have gone up, so, so we were curious, like, why is there a one, you know, a 1.4 million dollar spread from three years ago? And so a variety of different reasons, from teachers, you know, are, are unable to attend for being sick, they are, are maybe pulled into committee meetings, or staff meetings, or professional development meetings. And so that, when you think about that difference of the 1.0 million, 1.4 million, and.
Can I just ask there, too, wouldn't that also include like teachers that are on like extended leaves of absence?
Long-term subs.
Long-term subs, things like that.
Does that include long-term subs? Because I don't know.
Like intermittent leaves like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, like maternity leave.
Okay, maternity leave, and so forth.
Yeah, it's not just sick.
Right, okay. And, and so when, when we think about that, that 1.4 million dollar spread, and if you take the $400,000 out due to the, due to the, the permanent subs from the pandemic, that leaves you with about a million, so we asked, well, what, what, what makes up that million dollars worth? Because then you divide that by $185 per day that you pay for a sub, that's over almost 5,400 subs came in, and, and again, from a variety of reasons, from professional development days and so forth. So, so there was, are professional development days occurring during the day, are they occurring after school? You know, you can't really ask someone to, to not be sick, and so when they're sick, they're sick, and could we maybe leverage the common area where we don't have subs and all the students go into the common area during high school? That, that wasn't very viable when you've got too many kids in, in the cafeteria area. So one area in this, in this particular section was that the administration was going to go look and see, hey, what can they do around the professional development days to kind of find some efficiencies where it makes sense? But a, a lot of the substitute costs and, it, it's part of a union negotiations, so we couldn't really get into a whole lot of detail around, around that. It's, it's conversations that will be had between the district and, and the union, but it was interesting to hear how, how our financial spend for substitutes have, have grown from 500,000 to 1.9, and it's, it's an area that I hope that all parties can at least have a conversation to figure out, is there areas that we can find efficiencies, and, and, and figure out a way to kind of minimize the, the utilization of that? So that was, that was one topic.
Okay.
Yep. Another hot item that came up was parking lot fees.
Don't bring it up.
Okay.
Don't even talk about it.
So, so let's say, well. That didn't get, that, that was not, we didn't move forward, but we do charge a lot for parking lot fees compared to other, other communities. We generate $250,000 in parking lot fees between both high schools, so there was a desire not to modify the parking lot fees, and so we left it as is. We did look at deans as, what does that look like? I mean, we've had 14 deans, four at each high school, two in each middle school, we spent about 1.8 million dollars on deans, and, and so looking to under, better understand. We spent about 1.8 million dollars on deans and, and so looking to better understand the, the scope of their responsibilities. Where the majority of their resources might be allocated towards and, and the model of deans in other districts as well. I think we, we did toss out the idea of potentially, hey, would a TOSA make sense, a teacher on special assignment? Someone who has an administrative degree or certification that may aspire to be a dean in the future. There's cost savings opportunities there, but the way the model works and the relationships that deans have with our students, they are short on deans. And then there's an opportunity to find other ways to make sure that our students are being taken care of, that our deans have the ability to leverage the skill sets that they have. Without being, maximizing the, the time that they can have with the students when, when it's appropriate. So, so that was that. Staff development was, was an item. And so again, there are so many days, again, some of the, the things that we talked about were part of the union contract. So we couldn't really get into, into it too much because there's, there's negotiations, negotiations going on. And anything that we did want to change, that's not really in our scope to make those recommendations. But staff development was an item around how many days do they go? Do they not go? Stipends was another item that was brought up. According to the, the EML union contract, we spent over 600 and 700,000 dollars in fees, I'm sorry. Activity coaches, assistants and so forth. Now, if a teacher wants to work and be a coach, they, they're allocated a certain amount of money for a particular program. Not all teachers are, are coaches, but if they happen to be one, they would be on that particular list. So at, at a much broader level, you know, you can look at the activity coaches and assistants and reduce those that pay. You can say, hey, you know, can we get 10%, 15% haircut across the board and save us 60 to 70,000 dollars? But again, that's a union that was part of a Schedule C in the union contract that, that we can't really make adjustments to. But also if you make changes to that, you're also impacting coaches that are coming outside from just the staff. So if you, if you give, you know, a 10% or 15% haircut there, would those coaches then leave? And, and so then you're starting all over again with different staff, different teachers and so forth. I think another thing that, that was part of that was committees, you know, there, there are some committees that, we spent over 400,000 dollars on committees for stipends. And we talked about technology spend around the various technologies that are available. So Brenda, I'm sure Tracy and her team have already done an analysis of all of the applications and apps that we use and do we subscribe to. Got a lot of email, I saw a lot of survey content around, hey, we have WebEx, why don't we use Google meets? And, and so we learned that, you know, WebEx has significantly more security protocols. And there are a lot of WebEx meetings that are done, especially with our linked K-12 folks. So we chose, all right, well, that, that was an area to, to expand. And then outside consulting, that was another hot item around, are we, who, what are the non-construction and, and non-classroom facing outside consultants that we use? And so I think, Bill, you are going to populate, populate a list for us to see what that might be. And is there an opportunity to scale that back? Or if we spend XYZ on a consultant for so many years, does it make sense to make that into an FTE and reduce that, that, that consulting cost? But the general consensus was that the value that you get back from these consultants would be significantly more than hiring one FTE to, to replace that particular function. So. Let me pause there because we talked about a lot of stuff and I'll defer to Bree and Carly if there's anything else that I might have missed.
Those were just the viable ones.
Well, those are the ones that we talked about that we thought maybe we could even bring, but none of them made the list.
Okay, so there really wasn't.
There really wasn't.
There's also some of them were restricted dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, and some of them were negotiation related that we couldn't bring forward.
I think it's really important for, I guess, our community members and stakeholders to understand and as well as teachers. And just because there, there were a lot of really great ideas on these surveys, but then it did come down to like, that's not part, that is a restricted fund or that, or that is, you know. So there was a lot, I think, just from a due diligence standpoint, we felt it was important to evaluate those things. But the only thing that really stood out to me at the end of the meeting as this is something we could continue to look at was the substitute teachers with professional development and was, or the committee meetings? And was there a way to increase efficiency to reduce sub costs? That was, I think, the only thing we left feeling like is there, but again, that wasn't something that I felt like we were going to understand fully by June 30th.
Yeah.
Or enough to close the gap.
To close the gap.
And Doug mentioned too that they, they're working on streamlining that and trying to get that more efficient than what it is now.
And some of those dollars are PD dollars, restricted dollars. There's multiple layers to that.
And they did say that 2% of the general fund has to be used on PD. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So.
And why, and why can't we look at the consulting funds?
Well, so, so we can. Bill, Bill's going to make a list, but, but I think there was a general consensus for those who are using the consulting, consultants that the cost and the value that they provide, potentially hiring an FTE to, to, to do that work. Their return on investment may, would be lower than what the agency or the, or the, or the consultant would provide. Now, that's a different conversation around, do we even need the consultant? So, so I think we still ought to go through an exercise to make sure that we understand what is that list of consultants and do we need them, do we not need them? Who uses them and what do you use them for?
And again, some of those are restricted dollars and some of those consultants coming from programming for like Lydia's areas.
Yes.
The other area was like, for example, you used to have a person that did a lot of your demographics work and they got hired away.
And it would, and I'm sure some of, it would just be nice to know.
And, and I think that's what that, Bill, that's what I think Brian was saying Bill is working on, so. And that's why, again, that it's not as cut and dried, it's a convoluted, swollen.
It was helpful, not that we, I don't know, I just felt like it was helpful to hear more specifics and have the board representation just to be able to come back to the full board to, and to. Yeah, just to get the education around that. But yeah, I didn't feel like we had a whole lot to close the gap.
Yeah.
So the only thing I'm going to add from what I heard is, so under our policy 213, the Board of Education reserves the right to create or abolish any standing or ad hoc committee as it deems appropriate. And that's what we did. So we utilized that policy to be able to do that. And so then what we have to do then is we have to develop what that, the purpose of that ad hoc committee was. And what we agreed that that process was, were three board members or, you know, board members to meet, a subcommittee of the board to meet with Bill and to discuss the budgeting to see if there's any other creative solutions that we can come up with to help close that gap. So the concern that I, that I have that I heard is that there was somebody besides the board in there. And, you know, our union rep, I do not believe should be in there. We didn't talk about having that person in there. And we have eight unions that we represent.
I believe that's right.
And so it's concerning to me that there was somebody besides Bill and our superintendent and the board there, which was what we agreed to doing, was a subcommittee of the board. So why, anybody else was there without board discussion or did you know that they were going to be there?
I wasn't, I wasn't there.
So that, that's concerning to me. So that's not what a subcommittee is.
Well, so, so I'll, I'll take, I'll take that on because that was, that was my fault. I, I invited the union rep because they shared opportunities for ways to close the gap. And I thought, I, I want to hear what her point of view is and, and other options that we have to, because we still had a million dollars to close. So knowing, knowing that, and I agree that, that it was not in the resolution and that was not in the agenda, it is a, a lesson learned and we'll move on from there. But with that being said, I do recommend that we should have a finance committee. And I think that two or three board members should be on it. I feel that there should be individuals within the community that also should be on it. So if you want to call it an advisory, because that's, because you've got community members in it, I think we should. But I think we should have at least one or two board members on it. And I think the intent of the finance committee should be to review the, the program code series on a monthly basis. You can do the 100 series on one month, the second 200 series the next month. But I feel like we need to have a additional oversight in this particular area. So that would be my recommendation.
So the advisory committees are, if you look at all of our advisory committees that we have in place, the advisory committees are there to advise Bill, Emily, whatever it is depending on.
But it's not a committee, it's a council, right?
The advisory councils, yes. The advisory councils that are maybe a board member, some staff members, community members, all of our other councils that we have are there with the intent of advising Bill, advising you, advising you on what you need as you're preparing things to bring to the board. You're getting input and feedback from a group of community and staff members to advise us. Then there's a subcommittee, finance committee of the board, that's us. Those are the options that we have in place right now. We hired Bill to take care of the budget. If you want a subcommittee of the board to understand and learn more about that, we can definitely do a subcommittee of something like that for, from a, a learning and understanding piece for the board. But I'm not interested in hiring somebody to help Bill do his job. We hired Bill to do his job, the superintendent and these people to do their jobs. That oversight, that's our job. So if you need help understanding what those codes are and what that oversight is, and we have a subcommittee to learn together, I think that's great. We should be able to do that from an understanding if that's something you want to learn more about. But I challenge on how we present this because it's not an oversight to watch what Bill's doing. I trust what Bill's doing and I trust what this team is doing. And we can't let our community know that there's a lack of trust and oversight is needed. We need oversight to learn and understand and make decisions. I think that's where you're coming from.
No, I think that we need additional oversight for, for where we are and, and continue to make sure that as we move forward, we've got oversight for the board and where things are at.
And how do you think that Bill and the superintendent and the people that are educated and do this and learn to do this? What is, what oversight is this?
What oversight did you do?
What, well, I mean, I, I, I learn and I, no, no, that's fine. I, I learn and I understand and I know the budget, but I'm trying to understand what the oversight is.
So the oversight here in my mind would be to understand what all, all the program codes, where the funding is going, to provide additional clarity around our, our forecast or projections and finances. And then also to provide any additional recommendations and the, and the advisory that, that other committees have done in supporting the, the direction for the finance, TLAC and, and other groups like that. So I don't know why an advisory committee for finance wouldn't be warranted when we've got advisory committees in education and curriculum, when we've got advisories and, and other components.
No, I, 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 no, I'm not disagreeing with an advisory council. But I think the charge of what you want it to do maybe is different than what the charges of all of our other advisory councils are.
Can we just, so I just side note here, asked Bill if we'd ever had like a finance advisory council? And he said that we had, so maybe, would you just kind of, have you been part of that?
Well, actually, when I started, that's when we stopped.
That's when we stopped it.
But I have had, I have, I have had these and others.
Was it helpful? Like, what do you, did you find it?
I think it, it really is more of a, from my, my point of view, it's more of an education piece. So everybody who comes to that committee, they better understand the budgeting process and why we do what we do. That's what it's about, especially as we go through the years, not only the budget, it's also now the levy. Why is the levy the way it is? Why do we levy this? What's the process?
But we had a long-term facility committee, too, that was warranted, educational.
Well, so, but we did have a finance advisory committee. We had it for many years.
Community members were on it.
And it was community members that knew the budget. And the idea with them is it was, it was right before we launched, right before we had to do a lot of levy and bond referendums because they were very complex conversations to have with the community members. So we brought them in to help advise the business director and the superintendent on how to craft messages and get them to learn and understand our budget, what our challenges were, why we were going to need levy referendums and bond referendums. And they could help be a liaison between the community and us and understand the budget, understand all the finances. Could explain it to the community members more in layman's term. Not that bud, not that finance guys don't talk in layman's terms, but they're a little more exciting when they come from the community members. But then also that they could bring to the superintendent and the executive director what they were hearing from the community and how to craft the presentations. Were you here when we were doing some of those? And they helped craft the presentations, so we're using the right type of language to connect with the community and that kind of stuff.
Do we pay them at all?
No, it's, no, it's just, it's just like.
It's advisory council.
So speaking from, like, and Dave's been involved on the advisory councils with, with me, like the special advisory council. We have parents on that. And there's a lot of learning that takes place. Like, we'll ask, what, what's a topic that we need to learn more about? Or if somebody has a question, then we bring someone in from the district and there's learning around that. From my experience on that, that's been really positive for most of the parents that have been involved. Because then if there is something that, you know, that comes forward that we're, you know, working with the district on, we talk to other parents about it, too. So I think in.
But then from the other side, too, we've gotten a lot of good input from parents.
Correct, yeah. So I think from, from my perspective, I see it as a positive to have a finance council moving forward because we're going to need a lot of buildings as we grow. So we're, some bonds. We're obviously going to have some levies coming up. And I think with, with your finance committee or council that you had for a while, there, there seemed to be a lot of interest in the community to be involved in that. So I, I think it would be a worthwhile process, but that's just my thought.
I think, I think there's two things that I'm hearing. Number one, we had a discussion earlier on and Bill has been working on providing some different reports to you as a board that gives you a monthly update in regard to finances. And I think he sent that out and I think he's only gotten feedback, I'm just going to be honest, only feedback from one board member in regard to the, do those reports provide what you need? Does that act?
Like.
Yeah, I was looking for feedback.
I like that.
Because I think, I think, I think that was one thing that, to what Ryan was saying.
I read it.
Helped provide some guidance and oversight for you as a board to be able to see where the budget was that you approved, what the expenditures have been, what the revenue has been, those type of things. I think that's one of the things that we had heard from this group that you wanted. So Bill has put together two or three different possibilities of what it could look like. So if you haven't looked at that, that's fine, but give him some feedback of that, because I think that's one of the things that you're asking.
It was, yeah.
So, and so that was, I think that addresses that component of it. Because I, because I think that's two different things. I think for the board to have an understanding ongoing of the budget they approved and how it's being expended and where are we at? And what does it look like? I think that's the oversight component that maybe you're looking at.
Okay, yeah.
And then, then I think there's another component, and I'm, and I'm not trying to put word, I think you have to address, do, is your ad hoc committee now dissolved? And then if you want a finance of something, then I think you have to then say, what does that look like? And then Bill can put together some parameters of what he's had experience with the finance council and bring that back to you to be able to say, does this meet the guidelines of the other councils that we have? Because I do think it's beneficial to educate the community as a whole. But there's also only going to be a certain number of people that are going to say, oh, yeah, I want to go listen for an hour. Well, that's what I, that's what I was saying, because there's some people that are really excited about budgets and stuff. And I would rather hear from them a summary of what they've learned and discussed than, I'm not going to pretend.
I have a question on that. We just revamped all of our advisory councils. We have aligned their charges, seeking applications, which is going on right now. So is that something that we can incorporate into this cycle now?
I don't, I'm not going to speak for Bill since, since we don't have the charge put together. If nothing else, we could use the same process to be able to say, even if we get this other one done and that's something we wanted to move forward with, I think we could use the same process to recruit people to that advisory group.
Maybe a month later.
It may not be on the same schedule.
The 28th.
So.
In a few days.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can absolutely, we want to make sure that we are clear and aligned with all the components of the committee. And then we could run a process, as Dr. Vanzal suggested, a little bit later. But then next year, make sure that it's on the same cycle so we could just inform our community. Because we want to make sure we're clear, because we said we were going to do this, that this is an addition, it's a new committee. And there, we're recruiting now for this committee, but. and there, we're recruiting now for this committee, but then we'll circle back as part of the other ones. Because I just don't want to, I just want to make sure, because we didn't, we had inquiries, and so we communicated that we were going to do this, this is the process, this is the timeline. So as long as they're aware that it's something new and will be added to the process, I, I think that's fine.
And I think the words you have to be, council and committee, or the advisory council, is something that you're, would be adding. So, because a committee is something that you have by policy, this council was then truly advisory like the other areas would be.
Are we okay going ahead with that?
I think so.
To let Bill go ahead?
Everybody, okay for an advisory council?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, and, and I, I don't think we probably need maybe a finance committee yet. But again, if you and I have had conversations around those, those operational metrics, and, and I think, for, again, not any, I don't know if anyone else looks at them.
I would have the one with all the new farce codes, so.
I got to part of it, and I was starting to add it all.
So, so what we can do, the advisory council, if you haven't given Bill feedback on the information that he sent to you, do you need him to resend that, if you'll reach out to Kim?
I guess, you know, I sent you, you know, many examples, and I just wanted to focus on what everybody.
On which one?
Read the easiest, got the best.
Got it. So you need us to send you back which one we want? Got it.
Because that'll help him, then I think, address the point that we've asked to do, which is try to give some type of monthly report.
And we could, my goal, my hope is that that would be included in our business meetings as well, since they're on the tail end of, of, of the month, and so that we've got visibility to, for, for folks, so.
So it's like, oh, once a month?
Yeah, if, if it'd be once a month, I send this to you, so you can, you can understand, or if you have a question, you let me know.
So then the only other thing that is, your existing ad hoc committee, if you want that to continue to stand or if you're dissolving it, I guess it's.
Because we didn't vote on it last time, and we do just, I, I recommend dissolving.
Well, I think it is dissolved, because the intent was to figure out for budget reduction.
Just wanted to make sure.
We didn't find any money, I'm sorry. We tried, it was a lengthy conversation.
I, I wouldn't say it's a failed mission, because I like the financial experience, like, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
All right, so last item on the agenda is public comment. I added this item on to the agenda because it came up in discussion amongst the board on if we wanted to add a session of public comment back into our board meetings. And I guess that's, that's really the discussion. Do we want, do we want to add public comment back in with, with the public engagement sessions?
Yep, so I'm in favor of that, because, because I, and we talked about it during the regular board meeting. While, while I appreciate the, the stakeholder sessions where there's dialogue back and forth with the three, with the three board members, but, but again, there isn't. Not, not everyone goes to those, and, and I feel like having a, a, a public forum for, where, now again, I believe during those public forums, we can dialogue, but generally, I think that the protocol is not to, so that the individual has capa- has the time to, to share what they want to share. Especially through the budget process, you know, you've got this communication and that communication and this communication, and the, and, and obviously, the, the stakeholder sessions is one avenue, emails is another avenue. I just feel like from a, from a transparency point of view, if we had one stakeholder session a month, one, uh, uh, public comment a month, that would be a, a fair modification, so those are my thoughts.
So my thoughts would be, and my recommendation would be that we incorporate this into a conversation during our retreat in July, when we do that, because I believe you have to be careful on continuing to just add something here or there. To me, this is a bigger component around engagement, and what we want to do from a board engagement, and what the purpose and the intent and the value that it brings. And I, I think it's also, to me, I think it's a bigger conversation. And as, as we've shared and talked about in the past, is ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of what comes to the board for public comment is not issues the board addresses. It's, it's administrative issues, and it puts it in a position of somebody not knowing what the process is, and redirecting them back, you know, to the building principal or a classroom teacher, whatever it may be. Or you've got somebody that didn't like the answer they got from their teacher or their principal, and then wants to come and let the board know, but there's other steps along the way. And, you know, the division and the angst that it causes, I think sometimes outweighs the return on investment, and is there a better or a different way that we could do it? And have conversations around it, and making sure that the protocol is really clear about what the communication procedures are, so that, that they know. And then, and so, I mean, I think there's still a lot, there's probably a lot of better ways that we can hear from the community than through that, when it becomes a lot of kind of community members doing tit for tat using our platform. It, you know, during the budget process, it would have been all budget focused, but when it's not the budget process, there's a lot of other focuses. And one of the things that I would say, when we did the, oh, sorry to bring this up, Carly, but the election a couple of years ago, it was really divisive in our community using our platform with all the campaigning that was going on. And then the campaign that we didn't have that platform available was a very civil and, and, and a true campaign, and not using our school district platform to cause divisiveness and stuff in the community. So I think there's, from, from what we've had in the past, there's not a lot of value to the public comment for us, because there isn't exchange, not because of the limited time or anything, the purpose of it is for them to just share something with the board. And that's why the stakeholder sessions, I think, are important, and making sure that the community members know it's a time for discussion, not a time to sit and listen to them for five minutes.
And, and I think you're right with, with the, having you going through it, and, and probably Dave and Terry as, as well. I mean, from your point of view, you didn't see value, or may, maybe not, and I don't want to use that particular word, but you, you felt there was another avenue for, for that. And so I haven't gone through that, and so I, I don't have a baseline to j- gauge. Is it, is it worth doing or is it not doing? What I do, I would like to know, like, why did it end? And did that get, did you decide to end it during, during the retreat as well? I mean, did you vote for, well, you were here, did you vote to end it?
Uh, we were, we, my point of view is, is that we were having, we had to have two policemen here to patrol that, and which was, because people were attacking each other.
That was during COVID, correct? During COVID, correct?
Yeah.
But even, even before that, so, even before that, and, and honestly, my recommendation, you should answer his question, but, you know, they are, these are all visible, you can go back into the archives online and watch the meetings, they're there.
We had adults going after kids and spoke. I mean, it was, it was very tragic, but we did it. And then, then it was decided that we went, can we look at another avenue too? And I think the board decided we were going to try this and see if it would work. I mean, it wasn't unanimous vote, I think Dave and I were ones that wanted to do the private comment one time, or the, um, public comment one time, and the stakeholder session the next. But from, now that I'm kind of away from it, and we haven't done the public comment, to, to me, the public comment has got to be frustrating for the public, because they come up, they have three minutes to make a statement, we don't say anything, and then at some point in the future, not that meeting, we give them some kind of an answer, we tell the community what we did. Whereas the stakeholders, to me, um, it's very informal. They, we can talk to them, we can give them guidance if they need it, we can give them information, it's much more worthwhile to the public. Oh, and there's another reason too, I think we decided to try the stakeholders, because there were so many people that are afraid to be on camera. And, and that's still an issue. I know, I've, I've had people that say that, I go, I like stakeholders because I don't, I want to be a camera.
But to tell you why it went away, it went away because our superintendent brought it to the board three times?
I think so.
Make, it was a superintendent's recommendation to take it and do some other format and have the public comment happen. And they looked around other school districts, and when you go, went to the, when I went to the MSBA conference, and you talk a lot of, of school board members, they either were working and getting away from it, or they would put it before their meeting and not on camera. The biggest, the, the biggest, most divisive issue is being on camera and having our platform going out to the community, and that was very concerning. The police were recommending against it, the superintendent several times, and that was his recommendation. So we just kept having conversations around it, but if you go back, you can go back two years during COVID, pre-COVID and stuff, and, and hear the conversations, and.
Individuals' names, we tell them not to say, you know, you can't make it specific to an individual, the name will still come up.
I am going to speak to that, because the special advisory council would have kids come and read the, um, the inclusion statement every, every year, and we specifically decided against doing that the last two years, because we didn't want our children exposed to something that would be negative. And there were just, there was a lot of divisiveness going on, so I, I just, we did see that, I agree.
Because of the environment in the room?
Yes, yeah, and then because there were some instances, like Terry mentioned, where the adults were saying things to the kids in the audience, and so.
And then we had to be escorted to the parking lot, then our cars got vandalized, and I would like to also bring up, we need to discuss people coming up here after the meeting and berating us, I'm very serious. So that needs to be discussed, we don't have to discuss it tonight.
But, I'm sorry. I just, I mean, I want to provide the perspective as someone who sat on that side and witnessed kind of what I witnessed, and I was a target of some of those public comments, and it was not a good place to see our community in, in terms of the divisiveness. And so I think what I come back to as I think about this is, what is the, what is the goal? What are we trying to get with public engagement? Because to me, I think the concern that I have about where we are is there's not a huge amount of communication about what's happening at these stakeholder sessions, and so I don't necessarily know all the time, and I can't always make them. And so, or like, I would have had to miss a track meet of my daughters, which I'm already missing things going on in my kids' lives, so I can't always do it. And so I wonder if we can kind of take an approach of better summarizing what is happening and.
Bree and I got it.
Well, being able to communicate not that, not just, because I'm just going to be honest, most people don't watch our board meetings, or come to the board meetings, or know what happens at the board meetings.
We used to watch the, the public comment for a while.
It was, it was a drama entertainment thing, which is not what that should be used for. And it was, as someone who sat in this au- audience and at times was a target, it was not, it didn't feel like a safe place. And so all those things escalated, who knows what would happen again. And so what is the goal? And can we better communicate, not just amongst the board members, but also with our community about what's coming up? So Ken and Steph's gone, but how do we actually increase communication around what people are bringing to the board? And then also make it clear, when these kinds of concerns come to the board, what's the appropriate, you know, this is what you bring to your principal, or this, this was shared, that this would go to this director's.
So that was one of the things that I alluded to last week, when we were talking about just even responding to emails, is helping people understand. And that handbook that Kim sent out to us, that, what, what's it called, communication protocols?
Like the threat of.
So it's, it's whatever it is, but we have to really know what that is. So if they're saying that they have an issue with the teacher, or they have an issue with numbers that were presented for the budget and they were wrong, they need to go back to the principal, they need to go back. We need to be comfortable redirecting them to the right level of communication and what the process is bringing it to us. And so I think that's really important. As far as reporting back on the stakeholder sessions, I think that's really important. We had two today that were just nice conversations and, and stuff, and it was five minutes, and they were just nice conversations. And so I think.
So were they clarifying, or did, was there good discussion?
I've been summarizing those at the board meetings, but for the ones that I attended, but like, last time I asked Judy or Agri, because they had attended to, to say it, and are you, are you all comfortable with that? Like, if you attended and I asked?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But I, but how does that, it's one thing if we talk about it, and I, I come back to like, what is.
Heard it issues bigger than the board meeting, yeah.
Nobody, I don't, I don't know, majority of people don't watch board meetings.
No, and so what, here's what, that's why I'm saying, Carly, I think we bring this to our work session, our retreat or whatever that we do, and we all think about it, and we figure about what our engagement is with the community. Some of it's through understanding and hearing what's happening in the classroom, some of that's up to us to just go out and be in the schools, go to the events, go, I mean, that's, that's what I do. I mean, I just, I don't have kids in the schools. I think I'm in the schools more now ever, going to events, and the students that I mentor, and, and through my volunteering and everything else. So I find ways to be engaged as a board member out in the school, so I see what's going on. But the other thing is, is do we want to do the Panaprog Parade and the Oakland New Market Parade? And, you know, those kinds of things, like, there's a little of the promotional side, and then there's the true engagement. And to me, this bringing back public comment or whatever it is has to be had in that bigger conversation of what do we want to do as a board to get people to know who we are, to get, to know what that engagement is, and really what the communication protocols are.
I guess like, from my perspective, I, I feel like there's a lot of positive that happens in the district, and we, we don't get to see a lot of that. I really enjoy the communication videos that come out from the communications department, and the ones how they partnered with the special advisory council this year, and did the inclusion videos, those were amazing. Like, if you haven't had a chance to watch those, they're off.
Fun.
And I think at one time, we had discussed as a board, how can we bring some of those positive interactions to our meetings? Like, even if it's just, I mean, I, I like to listen to the superintendent and his good news every time, because I'm seeing, like, look at all these good things that are happening, but if there was one thing we could highlight like that, where it's a snippet. And I know we've talked about that, because some people take it as more than it should be, and it ends up being like twenty minutes, but. Right, right.
But we can just play those videos, we can just play those videos.
Maybe, yeah, maybe that would be.
Can just be.
I would love that, because I don't know if, like, people always look on social media.
Before we start our meetings.
Yeah.
But anyway.
Come back to this, are we, are we?
I sidetracked you.
Are we waiting, are we, are we not going to do it? Because, I mean, again, I'm in favor of that. The more options that we can give the public and transparency, obviously, we, we'd want to make sure there's good controls around it, and if you think it's going sideways, you, I don't think you have a gavel, but if you had a gavel, you can say.
She can use my pencil.
She is a gavel though.
Need a bigger pencil.
I, I hear all the negatives, and, and I get that. There are negatives that's going to happen, whether when we get to boundaries, and, and I'm sure there would probably be a lot of negatives that happen out, out of the, during the budget conversation. But at the end of the day, I mean, I mean, I don't work for you, I work for the, we work for the, the community. And so having a public forum, if they want to, obviously, we prefer them not to yell at us, but obviously, hopefully, there'd be appropriate controls and communication speaking and so forth. But having a stakeholder session, a public session, makes sense, and so that, that's, that's by two cents there.
I have one question. What is the difference between the two? And what would be, what would be the difference between the stakeholder session and the public comment?
The community member has a public forum that is recorded, where they can share their point of view on where their money is going towards. That's it.
But that's not what they use it for.
Well, that's where we can have better controls in place, and, and that might be past, past precedents or past history, but, but there's good that can come out of it, and I guess my point of view is just more public, more transparency is, is my intent.
But if you do a public forum and you, but you tighten down on what they can and can't do with it, then they're going to feel.
I would assume it'd be school oriented, I mean, it wouldn't be politics oriented, or whatever. I mean, if, if a, if a community member has and wants to say something about what's going on in their schools, what they see, they have the right to share that. And, 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 I mean, having them come in for a stakeholder, holder session where they talk to three board members and that's it, it's not recorded, it's not documented. I mean, at moments that might be documented, I mean, like, these are constituents, I guess.
What's the value of recording?
It's not, it's not, it's not the value of recording. Well, I believe it it ought to be recorded. For those who, let me rephrase that. Having a forum where they have an opportunity to speak to all board members about a concern of theirs about where their money is going, I feel like that's their right. I feel like they have the position, they have, they have, they should be able to do that.
Would it be okay to do it before the board meeting and not being recorded? That would accomplish the same goal, would it not?
Yeah, it could be done before a board meeting. I mean, I guess in my mind, the opportunity for them to share to the whole board what they feel is appropriate.
We were, we did consider that at one point, doing it right before a board meeting.
So this is. I would be okay with that.
I don't think that would be.
But again, is that, so I I'm, I'm not disagreeing with any of the conversation, but I think we need to put this into perspective with what we really want to do and develop our true engagement and promotional plan so that we make sure we've got all the bases covered to meet all those different needs.
We could do both. We can start this and and make that plan at the same time. We don't have to wait like Big Bang to like, hey, let's let's do that. Why can't we do both?
I would just say that I think there's potential for more ideas.
Yeah.
And to me, if we kind of, because we're, I don't even want to think that we're almost at the end of the school year, but we're ramping up to the end of the school year. And so it feels like, is this a time to make a change that may not be permanent versus us kind of sitting on this and thinking about it?
Over in the summer.
And just like coming up with like various, because I don't think it's just the stakeholder session or just public comment as it used to be. Or, I mean, I think part of it is, what what are those goals? What are the different perspectives that people bring into, what are different ideas? And what, and then starting that next school year with something that we feel is, feel is solidly in place as opposed to kind of adding back, maybe taking away in a couple of months. Just having more time to, because I, I didn't necessarily plan for my thought process and all of this too. Like I think there's a lot of different, I see the value of adding it back in and I see after witnessing it, um, what it can, the detriment it can do to.
How many of you have experienced, I'm trying to remember if everybody's been to the stake, I know you were today.
Yep.
Has everybody been a part of the stakeholder session?
Yes.
And I guess that's what you need to reflect on is, is that giving the people the voice to be able to share, even if it's only with three people? Because this is just my experience, I I would agree that probably ninety to ninety-five percent of what gets talked about in wherever district I've been in, people will only turn to me and say, okay, Doug, now you you go take care of that. Because they, people didn't know the protocol of how to go through the process of communicating that. So I I think there's multiple layers to this onion that, again, I I I kind of hear what Carly said too. I think you have to give some thought to exactly what is the purpose and desire. And but not only from your perspective, but from the perspective of the person who's presenting it to you. Because in volatile situations where people are going to disagree, they want their five, five minutes on camera.
But if we're not doing it on camera.
And I guess that's the other component, if it's on camera or not on camera, that has a role. If it's with the whole board, not with the whole board, that has a role, how often it is. I think, I think there's multiple pieces to it that you also have to be comfortable with. Because as much as you want to say that it's not impactful, it's impactful if somebody sits in front of you and says, you guys suck or this, this is that, you know, they say certain things, as much you try not to let it bother you. It's, we're only human, it's going to bother you through that process. And then to try to go into a meeting where you're making decisions about something else with that having taken place, that creates more angst and stress for you as well. So I do think that, I do think there's some time that you have to think about having that, a more thought process to what what those layers are.
I agree. And I think the one thing, Terry and Dave, when we first first sat in the first stakeholder sessions, those were with a lot of the people that were doing the public comment. And their comments to us was, they like these, these are nice, it was better. Because from the community's perspective, they don't like just talking to us and not having conversation back. But the other thing, it just reminded me of, and I agree with Carly on, we should think about this and, because other thoughts. One of the other things we used to do was like, we did like a quarterly community forum. And so like one time, we would say, we're going to talk about the budget and we're going to share. You know, it was just an education on the budget and our finance advisory committee was there and the board was all there. And we just shared what our budget looks like, the component, the timing of it and all that kind of stuff. And we asked people to come and share thoughts and ideas and we just, we would have different topics. I don't remember what some of the other topics were, but for a few years, we did those like quarterly community forums.
Yeah, we had some around our strategic plan. We had some around some redesign work we were doing, just various topics.
And there were things, so it was just the community came together, but it also generated, we had microphones out so they could ask us questions, not just about the topic, but about school district things and stuff. And and those were always good because then they could ask a question.
Were they well attended?
No offense, but the budget one wasn't. But the other ones were. But, you know, those were good because people liked that. They had a microphone, they could ask questions and they would get answers from board members or administration. And so again, I I welcome throwing around more thoughts and ideas around that before we just jump into making a decision here.
Bree?
Yeah, any thoughts? I, I mean, I I've never gone through it either, like, public comment, I've, I've watched it, I've watched some. Yeah, no, I I enjoyed the stakeholder. Yeah, no, I guess for me, I haven't experienced it, but I'm not saying that that's something that we need to implement right this minute either. I guess I'm not in a rush. I I guess I'd like to learn a little bit more on on other opportunities as well. Not saying I'm not putting public comment aside.
Right.
It's just, you know, being open to the other opportunities and and talking through that. And just for the the end of this year, I mean, we just have a couple of months left of the regular school year and maybe go into more in-depth conversation about it. I'm I'm okay with that.
And actually, there's a lot less going on in the summer too. We have, normally, we've had less board meetings in the summer too.
Yes, we need to talk about that for a different meeting.
Pardon?
We should probably talk about the calendar, but we'll, we'll do that in another meeting.
Yeah, later. Like August or July is pretty quiet normally.
And I understand that the need for the public to be able to be engaged and being able to, you know, for us to listen, I understand that piece. But I think we can have a little bit more conversation.
I agree. I I think people do like to address the entire board. But I also don't want to put it as, you know, something that they're only coming to because they're on camera and it not being appropriate for the context of the meeting, so.
I think there just needs to be more parameters.
Right.
And I don't want to commit more time before, I've said that before in other meetings. I don't want to come ahead of time. I'll come to some public engagements because we take turns, but so.
But if it's only once a month.
During, I would.
That's my, that's my, that's my opinion.
Regular board meeting, whether you have it before or after.
Right.
But I'm with Bree, I'm not ruling it out. I think we should discuss it more too.
So what I'm hearing is that we want to have more discussion around this at a later date and not make a decision on it right now.
And in bigger context, in a bigger umbrella around board member engagement, which actually ties into those goals that we had, those three-year goals on that plan. I think one of them has to do with communication and engagement. And so that, that's why, I mean, recommending that we utilize our board retreat because it talks about our board goals.
Well, I think we should, and we can talk about emails that we receive when we're not going to reply to.
Well, I mean, it's just overall communication.
And being approached at the desk, like I said.
A little bit of a community decorum, a little bit of.
Yes, respect.
I don't want to say professionalism, but you know, but again, we are in a position where stakeholders have the right to come and have conversations with us.
They'll do that to us in the grocery store too.
Yep, yeah, I do it when dropping kids off at soccer and they're like, hey, good job or not a good job. Like, yeah, thanks, you know, but but that's, that's, that's what we do, we expect. But I do agree, but I do agree that that, that even though we are representatives and our stakeholders also a little bit of mindfulness and and communication tactics or communication styles so that, you know, us have good, healthy conversation, whether you agree or disagree and find a path forward, so.
Because being berated in public comment or at the desk, there's not a lot of difference.
No, there isn't, yeah, yep, yep.
And then to Director Keller's point, we do receive emails. Kim is really great about sending those out, about opportunities for engagement from board members. I think the one out there right now is.
Oak Hills.
The retirement.
Yep.
Right.
An Oak Hill celebration.
And the Oak Hill celebration came today. Yeah, so make sure you respond to those things.
But being a mystery reader in elementary school, that's always fun. I did that a couple of weeks ago, I loved it.
It is.
All right, so having completed all the items on our agenda, I think we are, thank you for hanging in there.
But we got to get you like.